Um. Um, the Clatsop County Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, June 20, 2022 shall come to order. Would staff please take the role?
Yes, Jason Crashhour.
Present.
Christopher Farrar.
Present.
John Orr. Mr. Commissioner Orr appears to be absent. Lam Kwong.
Looks like he's connecting to audio.
Oh, okay. Carrie Johnson is excused. Nadia Gardner.
Present.
Clark Powers.
Present.
Clancy Adams, I'm here, and Gail Henriksen.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, looks like we have one member of the public here and another trying to join us as she is able. So I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. The Planning Commission is the official venue for public involvement in planning and community development for Clatsop County. We thank you for your interest and involvement and welcome your thoughts via email or verbal public comments. Moving on to our agenda, we have a pretty simple agenda today, just three public hearings. I've been informed, we've been informed by staff that the Southwest Community Plan has been reviewed by legal counsel, which has some recommended changes, and that is not before us today. And so I understand that staff is interested in us continuing the hearing. Is that right? Should we go ahead and amend the agenda at this time and to continue that hearing? Or go ahead and get to that agenda item as presented and continue it at that time?
I think Chair, what we'd want to do at this point is ask for it to be removed from the agenda. What's going to happen is we have gotten almost all of our legal reviews back from Land Use Council, except for Goals nine, 10, and the final reviews of the community plans. And so we are going to be making those revisions and bringing everything back as one package for one more review to your Planning Commission on August 9th. So that will include Goals 1 through 14, Goal 19, and then the six community plans. So you could certainly just have the public hearing then. I guess if you want to open the public hearing today, that's fine, but the comments may not be relevant based upon what we get out of that final legal review. So I don't want to spend people's time to review something that may not be what the ultimate final product is going to be, and we would recommend that you amend the agenda to just remove it. There would still be an opportunity under Business from the Public for people who did want to provide comments since that would no longer be on the agenda, if you wanted to handle it that way.
That makes sense to me. I will say, um, that's a lot to get in one meeting. And as we talked about in the past, like if it's possible to break things up. And I'm also wondering, um, is it, do we have to? I mean, if there's not significant, I mean, we've already seen the other three community plans and made our recommendations. If there's not significant, um, changes from legal review, do we need to see those again?
So we're going to bring them back, and we do have a list of the items that legal has asked us to change. For the most part, those changes have been really minimal, but we are putting together that list for you. Part of the reason we're going to do that as well is that we also had a phone call with DLCD last week. And while we do not have to, they would prefer that the Planning Commission just make one recommendation overall on all the comprehensive plan updates. So that's part of the other reason, and we don't have a complete legal review. So that actually gave us the time to bring everything back one more time with the list of changes that we made since your initial reviews. And that would give you an opportunity then to make one formal recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and then we would have our two public hearings on September 14th and September 28th.
Um, okay, well, I won't be in the commission at that time, so I'll let our, our new Chair, Commissioner Farrar, handle that as it comes to fruition. It makes sense to have like one final thing. I just worry, just knowing how we worked in the past, how, you know, seeing anything new, like big things, like we haven't seen some of those goals, might take a good amount of time. So, um, okay, but for today, yeah.
The Planning Commission has seen all the goals.
Okay.
So it would just be any revisions that we make to address legal counsel's comments.
Okay, so there are a couple of goals that got pulled out, so those are not going to be included.
Right, 16, 17, and 18, we are hiring a consultant in the new fiscal year to work on those three goals.
Okay, so it's just all the ones we've seen before. Okay, that makes sense. Uh, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so for this agenda item, we just need an amendment to, what's been suggested by staff is that we amend the agenda to remove public hearing number four, Southwest Coastal Community Plan update. Would someone like to make a motion on that suggestion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Do I need to repeat it? That we remove it at the present time and visit later based upon staff's direction?
Um, so there's a motion on the table to amend the agenda for June 28, 2022, to remove public hearing number four, Southwest Coastal Community Plan update. Do we have a second?
I'll circle.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Crusher. Um, any discussion? Commissioner Farrar.
I think we should establish a date when we do take a look at the community plan for the southwest area. You know, the calendar looks pretty tight. But if we just roll the Southwest Community Plan into the August 9th meeting, it's not going to get a fair review by the Planning Commission. So I think there should be a look at it either earlier in August or late July. If the July meeting, the regular July meeting doesn't have enough time to take it up. Otherwise, it's relegated to a different level of attention than the other area plans. And I don't think that would be fair to the residents of that area.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that point? Commissioner, Ms. Johnson, we, we're not open to the public comment right now, but we'll, we'll get to that under Business from the Public. Yes, let's see, Commissioner Crusher or Clark? I'm sorry, which one? I'm not sure which.
Whatever him. Okay. To go ahead with Commissioner Farrar is, yeah, I, I think a separate date is warranted based upon how we've read this plan in the past. Uh, it deserves a lot of attention, so I agree with him now. As far as the date, I don't know if we should do a separate meeting just to do this plan. But yeah, I don't think we should weave it into everything else that's happening on August 9th. I would agree with that, that we should have some sort of separate meeting for this, be it the July Planning Commission meeting or something else. So I support Commissioner Farrar in his suggestion.
Thank you. Commissioner Crusher, did you have a point?
I'm just looking at my schedule, and if we're going to make another meeting, I'm, I think I stated this before, but I'm out of the country. Um, last week of July and the first two weeks of August, or first week of August, sorry. We're going to make a special meeting. I'll, I'll be around for the August 9th meeting, but nothing before that.
Thank you. Director Henriksen.
Okay, so, um, not knowing exactly when we will get our final comments from legal review, I don't know that we'll be able, in fact, I know we won't be able to schedule it for the regular July meeting on July 12th. Um, that's the deadline that we've given them. Originally, our deadline was June 22nd for legal counsel, and so that obviously they weren't able to make that deadline. We've told them that July 12th is our drop dead date, just in order to keep us on track. We're going to be two months behind now. We have a meeting with, a joint work session with the Board of Commissioners on August 3rd, and then our regular meeting in August is August 9th. So I mean, we could, and it will take us, depending on the extent of the revisions that legal counsel recommends, it will probably take us a good two weeks, I would say, to make those revisions and put them uh, into a revised document for you to review. So I guess my suggestion is we can just track this one community plan separately. And it will just have to follow its own schedule, uh, if need be, to accommodate everybody else's schedule.
Um, yeah, well, I'll leave it to you to work with Commissioner Farrar in that. One idea that I might have is if it's possible to do a work session when, when the a majority of the commissioners can get together with the Southwest Community Group. I, I do feel like because we're expecting there will be significant suggested changes to that document, you know, honoring their commitment and the substantial town halls and other things they felt they did in their communities, their community, I think it's important that it not, like substantial changes, not skip them. And so maybe is it possible to do a work session that involves them so that both are done together rather than having two separate meetings?
Yeah, that certainly would be an option, Chair Gardner.
All right, unless we have other discussion, I think we should go ahead and um, vote on this motion to amend this agenda and move forward. Any final comments or questions on that process? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, to remove public hearing number four, Southwest Coastal Community Plan update from this agenda and discuss it at a future meeting. Do we, let's see, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on to Business from the Public, um, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that's not in the agenda, which includes the Southwest Coastal Community Plan update, which has been removed from the agenda. Um, all speakers from the floor to state their full name and their address before speaking. And if you're a representative, please state who you, who you are representing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak today?
Yes, you do.
Um, Commissioner, Mr. Dice, would you like to state your name and address?
Yes, Charles Dice, 31911 Clatsop Lane in Cove Beach. Um, so I just want to say that I am in total support of the comments made by Commissioner Farrar and Commissioner Gardner uh, regarding, um, including the Southwest Coastal Citizens Advisory Committee members in, uh, a review of whatever comes out of the legal review with the Planning Commission. Uh, so that the people that, that did spend almost three years working on this thing have an opportunity to see what is coming out of legal plus have a, an opportunity to give their inputs to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dice. Would anyone else like to speak? I know that Ms. Johnson had a question and, um, um, yeah, we apologize for the wrong Zoom link that you may have received for this meeting. Um, and just to answer your question, the Southwest Coastal Community Plan update, um, along with other aspects of the community plan are getting a legal review. And, um, uh, we don't have that for this meeting, so we're hoping to get that legal review before we make recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So that's why it was removed from the agenda. Did you have any comments today? Any other members of the public like to speak on Business from the Public today? Then we'll move on to our public hearings. All right, let's move on to our two public hearings on revisions to the Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan. Today, we'll recommend approval of the two community plans to the Board of Commissioners. So we'll start with, um, this is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to the Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan Northeast Community Plan update. Would staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Gail Henriksen, Community Development Director. The northeast planning area covers basically the area along Highway 30, the Columbia River, that's east of Astoria to the county line, and then south about halfway into the county. And this group was very in, I'll say engrossed, but that's not the word I'm looking for, but very involved and committed to their plan. We had a group of five committee members, Cheryl Johnson being one of them. And we kept the same five committee members all throughout the entire process, and they were very dedicated and diligent about going through this. A lot of the concerns that were expressed and what you'll see reflected in the policies had to do with protection of wildlife habitat, drinking water, protection of historic resources were some of the more important items that were discussed throughout their different committee meetings. And so this plan basically represents their, their work that was completed through August and December of last year. And I, I would like to actually ask Cheryl if she wants to add something, because I know she was at, I think, every meeting. And she, she led quite a bit of the discussion, so I would like to just give her a few minutes if she has anything she'd like to say.
Thank you, Gail. Um, I do have some opening comments that are more about process than about content. And I would echo what Gail said, that there were five people who volunteered initially and then stayed throughout the meetings. I think there was only one time when we didn't have a quorum and couldn't meet. So as Gail suggested, we were committed to the process. And as I have shared, I think with this body before, there was some comment early on from county commissioners that perhaps some of the, the local groups didn't represent the community, and I can't speak for all of the, um, all of the community ones, but I think ours really did. There were old people on that community, on that committee like me. There were young people on our committee, at least three of whom have children that are preschool or elementary age. There were people who are third generation Clatsop County residents, and there are people who have moved here in the last decade because they chose to come and live in Clatsop County. Also, as I have mentioned before, the northeast section is one of the best agricultural areas in all of our county. And we were lucky enough to have at least two people from farming on our committee. One person, again, is second generation of farming over 100 acres and is part of the Tillamook Dairy Cooperative. One of the other ones is new to the community, farming less than 10 acres, all organic, and able to support their family by marketing 100% to Astoria Sunday Market. So I felt that there was nice diversity, good commitment. Our leader was Jen Rasmussen. She was the chair. She did a very nice job of moving us through the agenda each week. We were able to stay on time at, for the most part, robust discussion. Um, and then we were able to come to some nice consensus. So I, I felt good about the process. I felt good about the input from our community as truly representative of the community. And I'm in a, a unique position. I am one of what used to be two of the only people on, in this process who, what, who participated in the original draft of this plan 40 years ago. So that was one of the reasons that I volunteered. I thought it would be interesting to see where we are 40 years from now. And the plan has evolved and changed, and as we have all said, we hope it doesn't go for another 40 years. So I just wanted to say a few words about process. I, I found the, the process to be positive and productive.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I, I just want to acknowledge that Commissioner Kwong has his hand up. Did you want to ask a question or we're still doing the staff report?
Sorry, my staff report is complete, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kwong, um, do you want to unmute yourself there?
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to, at the beginning to say this. Um, I can't stay very long at all today, so, but I just wanted to, this is my last meeting. So I just wanted to, uh, thank you all for the opportunity to get to see into, uh, the, the world of, uh, local government and how it works for the last two years. And as try, as I might have the last couple of years, I don't know if I have contributed, contributed much to this process. The the formal language and the process of this is, uh, it's not what, um, I'm, uh, and I have the capacity for and which probably show a lot of the time. But, you know, I, as much as enthusiasm and passions that I have in protecting the environment, I, yeah, I don't know, like, I have much impact into this, and I hope that I did some good. But I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to see into this world. And, uh, yeah, I hope to somehow see you all in this process, I guess sometime against soon. And thank you, everybody.
Commissioner Huang, um, thank you, and I also apologize for not giving space for you at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I want to honor you and, and your commitment, and I do assure you that you contributed in your two years, and your perspective is certainly valued. Diversity of voices, opinions, and having a person of color, I think, is incredibly important in our county also. Um, in our, um, all of our committees and commissions and, um, and as a parent and an artist and a small business owner, um, you, you have been, uh, certainly benefited the county, and I really appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? I know it's not quite on the agenda, but veer off topic. Commissioner Farrar.
Well, I'll just concur with those comments that, uh, that Chair, the Chair made regarding Commissioner Lam Kwong's contribution, I, I think, contrary to maybe how he felt at times, everything that, uh, that the Commissioner ever brought forward in the meetings, I think, was, was relevant and, uh, did bring an important perspective to the process. And so I, I've really appreciated having him on the commission, and I'm, um, admittedly disappointed that he was not reappointed because I think, uh, there's a danger here that the commission will become, uh, a body of seven people that are maybe a little too similar and not representative of the entire population of the county. But we'll see how it plays out, but at any rate, I hope this isn't the last we see of, uh, our, our fine Commissioner Lam Kwong. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need to get back to our, to our agenda item. It looks like Commissioner Kwong has left the building. Um, so, um, let's get back to our, our public hearing here. So it sounds like, um, staff has made her report. Thank you, Director Henriksen. And thank you also to Cheryl Johnson for her perspective on the committee. I want to personally thank Jen Rasmussen, Tali Spiller, Kelly Heckstein, Cheryl, um, and Dirk Round, as well as all the people that came, um, to give public comment along the way on the Northeast Citizen Advisory Committee. I do value, um, all the volunteer time that you put into this and other efforts around the unincorporated county. Um, do we have, um, before we get into, um, discussion on this community plan, do we have any initial, um, questions or comments, um, to staff? Hearing none will move on to public testimony. This hearing is open to public testimony. All speakers from the floor to state their name and address before speaking. And if you're representing anyone, please let us know who you're representing. And, um, let's try to limit our remarks to two minutes in order to permit, um, all present to, to share and also to get us through our agenda on a expedient manner. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during public comment on the Northeast Community Plan update? Hearing none, public testimony is now closed, and discussion is open, open for Planning Commission members. Um, I'll note to the group that, um, I'm looking here at the Northeast Community Plan in our packet. Um, and on page, going back here to the staff report, um, page four of the packet, we are given by staff a few action items. Number one, to review the Northeast Community Plan Draft 5. Identify any questions we have and recommended changes if we have any. And then finally, provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And the suggested motions are either to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the Northeast Community Plan Draft 5 as submitted by staff or as amended, if we have made some suggested amended amendments along the way. So, um, with that introduction, I think we should go ahead and walk through the document. So, um, you know, uh, let's see, so it'd be starting on page 10 of the packet or page one of the community plan. So we'll start with the narrative and we'll make our way over to the policies, which I hope will be focusing our attention there today. Do we have any questions or comments, um, on the introduction or landscapes units of this plan? Yes, Commissioner Farrar.
A couple of quick ones here. Uh, I mentioned this at our previous meeting, uh, just applying generally to all the uh, community plans that it would be nice if there was a, a clear map of the region as it sits within the county and some very basic information, um, concerning, uh, population of the entire area. I notice in this introduction, um, there's a population figure that's from the 2020 census, but it's, it's only for two communities. And I thought it would be helpful if the entire area, if there's a way of, of getting that out of the census data. It's just, um, helpful to have some context here. Uh, the other thing that's general on the introduction and kind of, uh, going into the landscape units, which is a similar format for each of the, the community plan areas. And I, I think that's good that there is a kind of a format to these that they follow. Um, in the landscape unit section of this, uh, particular community plan, there's mentioned the Northeast Environmental Plan of 1974. And I didn't see that at the, toward the end of the document where various references are given and links to them. So I didn't know if, um, that is that sort of a document that one can look up online or, or find something, or maybe I missed it back there. Oh, it's there.
Um, okay. I just added it, Commissioner Farrar.
Okay, um, the other thing is, uh, on the figure there about the landscape units, I thought that figure one, profiles of landscape units, that looks more like it was, uh, it's actually one above that. There's a, a figure, a cross-section there, and, um, it looks more like it's something for, that would be applicable to the Clatsop Plains, uh, subregion. And, um, that's because it shows a coastal beach, which I know some people are trying to claim that, um, some of the lowlands along the Columbia River. some of the lowlands along the Columbia River are coastal beaches. But I think most people assume a coastal beach is along the oceanfront. And then the Four Dunes and Back Dunes, Inter Dune area, it just doesn't really seem applicable to this particular area. However, Cheryl Johnson's here, maybe she can refute that point. And then just related to that, the next figure that shows the landscape units map, I hope can be improved a little bit with just perhaps, well, the version I'm looking at is just a little bit fuzzy. And I don't know if that's just the printed version that I have or if it's.
Let's, let's let Director Hendrickson respond to some of those. I think she had talked about some of the other plans, these being updated before it was finalized. I'm not sure if that's the case here.
Yeah, this map is actually from the 1979 plan. And so we're working with GIS to complete the map series, but it will be updated using modern GIS technology and actual colors instead of black and white. And then I would have to go back and double check, but I'm almost certain, Commissioner Farrar, that the other figure that you referenced was what we actually took out of the 79 plan. And I can, made a note that we should verify its geological accuracy and update it if we can.
Thank you.
And I think, so I think those suggestions that Commissioner Farrar made is that, are they Scribner enough that we don't need to make motions regarding those? Director Hendrickson?
Yeah, I think so. And we had plans to replace these anyway, and that will be in your August 9th packet.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, Commissioner Farrar, you have others from the landscape units?
No, I, I don't have any comments until further on in the document down where there's a discussion of Nat Creek and some of those things. I'm, I'm looking at old page numbers unfortunately from, from last meeting's packet. So I, I have a comment on, on what I show as page 10 Nat Creek, but if others have previous pages they want to comment on, then go for it.
So Nat Creek Brownsmead, I think, shows up in document page 10 or page 18 of the packet. The discussion of Nat Creek with its wetlands and riparian vegetation, is that your section there?
Yeah, I assume it's page 10 still of the actual plan. Nat, the headings Nat Creek, Brownsmead. I just had a question about that facility at Aldridge Point. I, I thought there had been a recent change with the county actually removing a boat ramp there. And I, and I wondered if this document, it's, it's brought up at a few different points in this document. And I wondered if it was current with what's going on out there now. So I defer to Cheryl or somebody else, or Ms. Johnson to, to comment on that.
I'll let Ms. Johnson speak to that.
The, the work that was done most recently, and that's been in the last year or two, was actually to upgrade the boat ramp. So the boat ramp is definitely there and it's better than it has been in the previous 10 years. And this description is, is fairly accurate. It's a, it's privately owned but county managed. So it's this very unusual hybrid, which is what was worked out in order to leave it open to the public without having to put in restrooms and trash pickup and all of those things. So it's, it's fairly accurate as written. Gail may have comments.
My only comment is that the only doc that the county has removed recently was out, the NAPA doc. And that one we did take down a couple of years ago.
Okay, that's a point, that was a point of confusion for me, I guess, and I appreciate you clarifying that. And that, that seems to address my concern on that.
Okay, and then that brings us to, through the landscape units, to natural hazard areas. We have discussion of mass movement, flooding, streambank erosion, and wild fires. I felt like there wasn't a lot of discussion, like we've seen in other plans, about earthquakes. That was one thing I noted, but it may be also that it's covered, you know, kind of countywide, but if there was anything that was specific to this area, I'd always like to see that, you know. Any other questions, comments? Suggested amendments? After that section is natural resources, surface water and groundwater quality, which was noted as an important aspect of this community. Yes, Commissioner Farrar?
I have just a few comments in this section. First of all, I wanted to clarify, and I'm glad that one of the participants in the community group that worked on this plan is here. At the bottom of the second paragraph there, there's a statement that reads, thus during the summer months, the streams have, during the winter months, the streams have very low flow. And I'm wondering if that isn't really intended to be the summer months? Because if you use common logic, the summer usually lower. And then if you look at the two tables of stream flow data for this region, certainly the, the months of July and August and September are the low months.
You see that, Director Hendrickson? I do think that's a typo there, yeah.
Then I had a question about, for, or I felt like the discussion of stream flows and the amount of licensed water use or permitted water uses for the streams. I could understand what was meant there. There's a statement just above the, the heading for Table One, Big Creek Stream Flow. And it's, it says Big Creek is an example of the stream that could possibly run dry in August. And that's referring back to the idea that there's so much water use from the stream. And that's looking at it as though the in-stream flow requirements are part of the use, as I see it. And I, I think it would be better if that sentence were reworded something to the effect that in summer months, there may be insufficient flow to meet in-stream and off-stream water rights. Because that's different. I don't expect the streams to go dry, but there may be insufficient water to meet what probably fish and wildlife has gotten for in-stream flows in that area. And then the water that's actually applied somewhere else. I just think it'd be helpful to make that point. And I, I don't know if that's Scribner or maybe again, Ms. Johnson has some recollection of what, whether there's something I'm not seeing here about this.
I don't have any specific recollection on that. And as usual, Commissioners Farrar's knowledge of water far exceeds mine. So, and I think it could be a Scribner's change, but I defer to Gail.
Yes, I would agree with that. When we get to the policies, I think that's where we want to be very clear in making our motions. But in the narrative, I think we can look at it as Scribners.
Great, that keeps it easy unless there's objection. All right, what's next, Commissioner Farrar? You have Nat Creek Aquifer, and then we get into agriculture and forestry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything until quite a ways down. I had one quick thing on page 30 of the document. But maybe somebody else says something prior to that, I don't know.
Yeah, let's walk through here. So we're on page 17 of the document or 26. So cultural housing is the next one. I thought it was interesting that the Wana Mill drove a lot of the development historically in the area. I didn't know that. And then, of course, it discusses the Strategies Report. And the water and sewer capacity being limited, limited, limiting factors. And this, this area, of course, I can expect this area, the ADU changes could have significant impacts on this area if people really picked it up. And then we get to recreation, where you have a nice list of the wonderful county and other recreational facilities available to the locals and visiting public in this area. There's kind of a weird highlighted number five. Oh, yeah, remember, see that weird highlight? Any comments on recreation? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I think the five is highlighted because it needs to be updated, and that's just a Scribner's one. It's no longer under construction. They had a grand opening. The improvements are there. It's marvelous. So that can just be updated as a Scribner's.
Great, thank you for noting that. Okay, open space is the next section. These giant maps do weird things to my document scrolling. And then historic areas and scenic natural areas. Noting the city of Astoria's drinking water is actually coming out of the northeast. And then page 24 is fish and wildlife. I did have a comment on this section, if folks agree. So this area is the most, is the primary area for the Columbia River. And of course, the Columbia River is, you know, the basin is the size of France and goes through five, starts in Canada and goes through five states. So it's a, it's a monster and we are right at the base of it. So we're incredibly important for juvenile fish habitat in particular. And though we like to focus on spawning adult fish, really the importance of our area is on those babies coming down into the saltwater mixing zone and adjusting to saltwater, eating, hiding from predators, and then running out into the ocean and hoping for the best when they get out there. And one thing not noted in this section is that there are, third, you know, there's 12 listed salmon and steelhead species here. And then there is Ulycon, which is also listed, and orca whales and sturgeon, white, white sturgeon, southern DPS. And I do think it's important to note, you know, the importance of those in this particular plan. And then, of course, they also have Columbia whitetail deer, which is discussed. But I think, you know, I, I feel like the emphasis on this section is on hatcheries because of the important, for importance for the economy. But this is the fish and wildlife section, so I would suggest that there be note of those, that substantial list. Oh, and also there's marble murelet in the ODF, some of the ODF areas. So, um, yeah, so there's like a lot, a lot of listed species here and they're not noted. So what do you guys think about that? Salmon, steelhead, Ulycon, orca, which have been recently cited in the area. So a lot of orcas this year. Is that something that could get added as a, without a motion, Director Hendrickson? You could even plop that little table that I feel like we developed for the larger thing with just focusing on those species for this area. But, yeah, okay. Anything else for this section? Director, I mean, Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted to note that the information on the fish hatcheries in there was at the request of the, of the CAC. It wasn't mentioned initially at all, and, and they do play an important role. And they are very much located within specific north, northwest, northeast. So thank you to the staff for going back and digging out that information and putting in a, in a short, a sort of a short summary. And I wholeheartedly support Gardner's suggestion that we include language that's referencing the endangered species, especially the fish.
Okay, moving on, thank you, to transportation. We're going to bus service out here, but there is bus service both to and from Portland and within the Columbia and Clatsop Counties. Public facilities and services, starting with water systems.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Powers, thank you.
Probably more of an educational question. When I'm looking at the water tables under public facilities, there is a column on the far right that talks about current violations, where it lists those that have or don't have. What is the significance of having that in the plan? I didn't see it addressed anywhere.
There was mainly information that was available that I thought was interesting, but we, there's no requirement to put it in the plan. Obviously, it'll change as time goes on.
Yeah, I didn't know if the county was looking at doing something about it or, or what the purpose was. Sorry, it was just an educational question.
Yeah, these are independent, they're their own local governments and their own taxing districts. So the county doesn't have any plans at this point to address or work with them to address any violations.
I saw that also. I thought that was interesting. I mean, to me, it's kind of a indicator that maybe there are some issues with those that you should, you know, that you shouldn't.
Maybe there's an accident that should be taken.
Yeah, that maybe, yeah, it's like, just because it exists doesn't mean it's, it's doing well. That's what I kind of thought about as a member of our water district, I think. Uh-oh. And I do note, I think, when we've been asking staff in the past about both water and sanitary districts, even getting information from some of them has been a real challenge. And that also is an indication to me that something maybe isn't functioning well enough to be maybe serving the public in the way that we'd hope. So. I just saw a quick typo here. Page 29 of the document, $10 sign, first, first paragraph. Third line, yeah. All right, anything else from water? And then we're going on to sewer systems or sanitary.
Chair, Commissioner Farrar has a question.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Farrar?
Just, just going back to that table of the water systems, I, I think it's great to have that table in there. It's. It's a surprising number of water systems in a very rural area, which I think is a good thing to have water systems rather than a lot of independent self-supplied systems. But I just wonder if there shouldn't be maybe a sentence included there that I think perhaps all of these, because of their size, are really regulated more by state water standards. And they need to comply with certain sampling requirements, mainly for bacteriological and chlorine levels and things like that. And if that point was made clear, it, it might just help people reading this to understand that the county for most of these systems wouldn't be a regulatory body in general, may, maybe under an emergency situation they would. And I likewise, I, I've seen that current violations column, I think not only in this plan, but maybe in some others. And without saying when those violations occurred, it, it's kind of unfair in a way because what really matters more than the violations themselves, all the violations are important, is how quickly they were rectified, how quickly they took action and, and fixed the problem. And, and so if, if the violations are where they had an exceedance of some value, but just didn't do anything about it for a while, I think that's worth noting as being a problem the county might want to look into what can be done about it. But as far as having a little, you know, one or two bacteria readings go over, but then they chlorinate and they, they kill off the, the organisms. That's showing they're doing their job the right way. So I, I'm just kind of rambling here and I, I apologize, but maybe a sentence could be put in there as to which of these systems would be under county, if any, or if they're all under the state.
I will note, so the source of this is the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Data Online from October nineteen twenty-one. And that's like only current violations as of that time. So I think I would be supportive of it staying in just like, like as a trigger, but like, I mean, I guess like having some sort of note maybe on underneath it. I don't know what it would say, but just saying, you know, just reminding people that's a snapshot in time and that it's not the authority of the county, as, as you said, Commissioner Farrar. I, I, I think I would leave that up to staff if they feel it's important.
I appreciate Commissioner Farrar's comments on that because I, I agree, you know, if there is a small violation at the time and they rectified it immediately, some people will take a look at this and be like, oh, my gosh, there's violations and throw up red flags. But it, it is how they solve it, how they fix it. And and if they get it done in a timely manner, that is what really matters because you can't operate anything without some sort of violations because things happen, right? It doesn't matter what water system it is, there's going to be high levels every once in a while, there's going to be low levels every once in a while, and they're going to, it's how they fix it. But they, seeing all those immediately for me would throw up red flags and I'd want to source to where I could click on it and go see if it was fixed or still outstanding. My thoughts.
That's a good idea. Actually, you could provide just like to see the current violations, a link. Most of these documents are online at this point, right? So I like that idea. It, it does worry me when you look at so many of them. I mean, as a water district board member, it's not common for us to have these. So, you know, that so many of them have them is a, it's a signal for a larger, not just an individual question, but a larger, like, maybe there needs to be some sort of countywide exploration, exploration of how to support these facilities working to not have them. So okay, it feels like, okay, go ahead, Director Hendrickson.
Yeah, so with regard to the link and the discussion that the planning commission has just been having, I think staff's recommendation would be just to delete the column. The concern I have is that if we start linking these, these are going to constantly change all the time. And so we may have it listed as a yes, and you click on the link and then it says there are no violations. So either we just leave it as it is, or we just take it out would be my recommendation. And I would personally recommend just taking it out.
Um, I was thinking just like a link to the website where people could look it up, not each individual one, like the database, the drinking water data online link, like in that paragraph down below. I mean, that we were talking about adding.
Okay, but I would still recommend just deleting the column that talks about the violations because the county, these are independent districts. They, they are their own governments. So the county is really not in a position to take them on or take them over. That's not the role that county government has. The only thing that we operate is the Westport Sanitary Sewer District, and that's the only thing that we have. So I would just recommend deleting that entire column regarding the violations.
I agree. How long is it going to be till we review this again? In a long time, you know, in however many years, they may not be a yes anymore. So I, I agree with Director Hendrickson.
Yeah, yeah, that was going to be my comment. This is a twenty-year plan, not a status report.
Can I, yeah, we are, yeah, we are updating it every four to six years now. That's the, not the twenty-year timeframe. I'm, I'm fine with it, but I will say like, I mean, it shows a problem. And, and even the county doesn't have to take over a water district to be a convening force to, to try to help. Just like the, you know, you don't take over the elk problem. You just, you know, you convene or be a part of a working group that looks at the larger issues and figures out as a team with all the different municipalities and partners, how to make sure that our citizens and especially non-incorporated area have safe drinking water, safe and abundant drinking water, right? And so if we take it out, then there's no note that what we've just seen. Right? So, so I'm wondering if like, I don't know, like if we take it out, we just know like, I don't know what we've seen, maybe, maybe we don't know enough, but to me, when I see this, I go, ooh, we have a problem. Commissioner Farrar?
Just a couple of quick points, not to beat this thing to death, but each water system is required to send everybody on that system an annual report. And maybe it's even twice a year. I don't know. I just got mine for Fern Hill. And that's something individuals should look at and keep track of how their system's doing. It shows if there have been any violations and what was done about it. And I, I find those reports rather brief and, and I find the sampling rather sketchy. But that's a state issue. That's, that's not a county issue. The other thing I'll say, so, so, so that material comes in a timely basis to every individual that wants to take time to look at it. It's, it's written in plain English. The other thing is that the, the website that we could reference here, that I guess we are going to, not only has the current violations, but there's a way of going back in time and looking at it historically. So if you're on a water system and have concerns about your own water system, you can go back and see if they keep having violation after violation after violation, which might be something far different than the occasional exceedance. And so yeah, I just, I think the details of, of how well the water districts are doing with their water quality requires a lot more research and investigation than what would be appropriate in a comp plan. So that's, that's all I'll say. Thanks.
Charles Dice, who's at the meeting, also runs as the Water District in the Falcon Cove Beach neighborhood and also agrees to remove the column because it happens. Commissioner Kraschar?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the column that is current violations, i- if, if that's what we need to do.
I would second that motion.
All right, we have a second and a, I'm sorry, a motion in a second to remove underwater systems on page twenty-seven, the current violations column. And any discussion? I'll just note, we could also add something in the policies if we wanted to encourage the county to consider looking at that as a project or collaborating on a project around that. Just another thing for the county to do. I know you're not busy enough. And of course, that's sarcasm. Okay, we have a motion in a second to remove that column. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to sewer systems. Diking districts. I just see a typo on the last paragraph on page thirty. Many of these water districts, but it should be diking districts are no longer active. Then there's schools.
So Chair Cheryl Johnson and Commissioner Farrar both had their hands raised.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Let's start with Commissioner Farrar.
I, I had the same comment on that diking district versus water district. So you covered it. Thanks.
Ms. Johnson?
The diking districts was a big discussion for us and sewers was a, was a discussion that kept moving in and out of almost all other discussions. Again, one of the joys of having these local plans is that one of my neighbors is on the diking district. And what was in the plan from forty years ago, probably half of those diking districts have just flat disappeared because the people who were running them have died, and there weren't enough young people interested in taking on that responsibility. But like maintenance in Brown's meet is critical. It's especially critical to support agriculture. So Ed Johnson did a nice job of updating the diking districts. And there you'll see in the policies, there is support to maintain the diking districts whenever possible. And I think the interesting piece for all of us, as we continue to look for low-income housing, workforce housing, is that in rural Clatsop County, and I mean, it just became very clear for us out here in the northeast that unless there is a sewer, you cannot build more houses. And it was just black and white, very clear. So we were trying to figure out ways to increase housing. And we just ran up against this hard and fast rule on sewers. So sewer, sewers where they are and aren't. And the fact that the state does not allow the addition of any sewers beyond a very stringent set of recommendations was very interesting for us and went in and out of a lot of other discussions.
Thank you. Christopher Farrar?
This, this is a question that's really directed toward Ms. Johnson, Johnson about the diking districts. And, and I don't remember, maybe there's a sentence somewhere in the report here, but how are those diking districts funded to do the maintenance? Are they, are they taxing districts? Any of them?
I wish that Ed Johnson were here. I'm, I'm not the local expert on diking districts. I think that they are taxed. And again, Gail may have information on this. And, you know, if nobody's doing the work to collect the money to notify the people, I mean, in a number of places, it just disappeared, faded away.
I see our counselor, Lyons Antley, is still with us a month later, and she might have a comment on that diking district question.
Sure, Chair and Commissioners. So what the diking districts do is they do an assessment. And they do an assessment through the county. So then the county bills those people that are part of the diking district collects the money and then provides that for the diking district to then utilize for its activities.
Thank you. This is also a big challenge in the Youngs, Youngs Bay watershed as well, as we've noticed in the previous plans. I want to note that it's eleven-ten, so we've been working on this for almost an hour now. So I think we want to keep moving forward if we can, unless we have real substantive changes. We can talk about this all day. It's really interesting, but we do have one more plan to get through today. So if we can, let's move forward to fire protection. Again, this is a largely forested area of the county. The whole county is largely forested. And so forest fire will be an increasing challenge for those on the forest edge. It's interesting, they have a power generation section, which I didn't see in previous plans. But even though Tally was on the committee, I don't see a lot about charging stations, surprisingly. And electric cars, I mean, and community development setting and assumptions. And then we get into development. Rural lands, rural ag lands. Natural lands. Am I going too fast, Commissioner Farrar? You have any comments on these sections? Okay. All right, now we're at goals, objectives, and policies, unless we have any questions, comments, or amendments to those previous areas. So this is, if we do make substantive changes here, we'll, we'll definitely be, it'll be a more formal process. So we'll start with general policies. And then the landscape units. And then natural resources. I just noted under policy B, the cleaning of slues and ditches and dike, dike maintenance shall be allowed under diking districts in cooperation with Clatsop Foil and Water. I know that's of particular interest to the farmers of that area, especially Dirk Roan, I'm sure, had a large voice in there. But I will note that that's can, you know, really under the jurisdiction of the state and federal regulators because of the fact that most of that farmland is reclaimed, dyked Columbia River floodplain with lots of endangered fish. So that's always a challenging subject. You don't need to change it. I just wanted to note it unless someone else has a motion, but natural resources. So we have ag policies and other policies. And then housing policies.
Yeah, I have a question on housing.
Yes, Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, under policy C, I've read that several times, but I'm not sure I understand what the policy is. Is it to limit more new houseboats? Not replace them? What is the objective of policy C? Just didn't understand it, sorry.
Yeah, so since two thousand, new houseboats have only been allowed in a very particular area, the John Day River. And then all the other floating structures that you see elsewhere in the river are basically non-conforming. And there is a bright, like in the Julia Butler Hansen Refuge. Where they had the um, I think it's DSL or maybe it's Fish and Wildlife, but one of them has the right of first refusal. So I think it's more just a reminder that this is still in effect and we do have rules in our zoning code that uh address the issue of where these new houseboats are allowed to locate.
So that should that belong here as a policy if it's nothing more than a reminder as opposed to something proactive like they should be limited? I I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Well, they are limited. Um, they have been since two thousand and they continue to be. So this is ongoing enforcement, I guess you would say.
So I think what I'm hearing is that um this is not a policy. It's more a narrative. And so it may be more appropriately located in the housing section of the narrative.
Yeah, I I would agree with that. Do I make a motion that it be moved from here and put in the narrative of a housing? Remove policy C be removed and the rest free.
Yeah, I think so. But let's look back at that section just to see what's there now because it may be there also. I'm not, I don't remember it, but.
So Chair, a couple of things. Um, I would agree, it probably does not belong under housing. The concern I have about removing it completely, um even though we do have this rule in the zoning books, having it as a policy in our comp in the community plan gives us that foundation uh and just makes it stronger. Um, I don't think legally it would really matter because we're still going to have to abide by the zoning rule. But I'm just a little concerned about stripping it out of the policy section completely and just putting it in the narrative. Um, but I would agree, it doesn't probably belong in housing. But maybe there's a better.
Well, it is housed. I mean, it's mostly vacation housing, but um but um, you know, so is most of our houses, it turns out, but uh that have been built recently anyway. Um, but uh maybe it, maybe it's both. Maybe it goes like, so maybe the facts go in the housing section of the narrative. And then we make note of it somehow as a policy too. Does that, I mean, because it like, um, so I could say something like um, the county should um, continue to follow, um, you know, DEQ a regulate, you know, um, or something, I don't know, some some sort of wording around um acknowledging that. So then you have that re, you know, staff has that reaffirmation that's needed.
Maybe there is a sentence at the end of that discussion if you wanted to, if you wanted to leave it all in and just add the sentence, the county should continue to comply or whatever the the word is with whatever Gail was saying of what is the document they have to have to address.
Looks like Director Henrikson is just working on that and just additional sentence, which makes sense.
Yeah, so it's it's not the county that has to comply with DEQ's septic issues because that's the individual structure owners. Um. So I think if we can say maybe support all requirements and standards uh related to.
By DEQ or something.
Yeah.
Related to how um houseboats. Do you want to make that motion, Commissioner Power?
Yeah, I I'll make that motion. And what Gail just wrote up is that we add a sentence to policy C under housing policies. The county should continue to support all requirements and standard standards required by DEQ with regard to houseboats and floating structures.
All right, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Um, it's been um moved by Commissioner Powers and seconded by Commissioner Farrar that we add a sentence to policy D. The county should continue to support all requirements and standards required by DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality with regard to houseboats and floating structures. Any discussion? I just might still add the language above, not the policy, but the language above back in housing as well. I just make that suggestion to staff and they can do as they will. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Oh, here's where you find the uh electrical vehicle charging, I see under policy, yeah. I think that's great. Um, all right, next is recreational policies. I like the bilingual addition, bilingual directional informational signs at facilities, knowing the growing, especially Spanish speaking population. Historic area policies. Scenic and natural air policies, area policies. And fish and wildlife. I do know that um this section and also a previous section in the recreation talks about reducing the use of herbicides in county parks and along county roads. Is that something that has ever been discussed um by Public Works or on the Board of Commissioners or Parks levels that you know of, Director Henrikson?
Um, I don't know the answer to that one way or the other, Chair Gardner.
Commissioner Farrar, do you have any um suggestions on any of these? Are you feeling comfortable? Or other commissioners?
Uh, you know, in general, I found uh the policies laid out in this community plan very well thought out and quite comprehensive there. I I agree that the change we just made on that one to make it a policy was was a good choice. I I don't, I just have a couple further down the list, so I don't know if anybody has anything further in there. They're really more organizational, I think. I I felt one policy should be moved to from public facilities to the heading groundwater resource policies.
Okay, so we have um transportation on page forty five and then um riparian area policy and then public facilities. So which public facility one? Sorry, I missed that.
Um, policy E uh under public facilities talks about a study should be undertaken to determine the occa for extent of an occa for et cetera, et cetera. Um, that might be i- in preparation for developing some kind of public facility, but to me, it definitely fits better under groundwater resource policies. And so I was going to suggest moving policy E out of that. Adding and put it as policy B down under groundwater as being a more logical place. And um I did have a couple other wording changes uh in that section, but I don't know if we want to consider that. Moving that one policy is a logical thing to do.
So um I'll note too above policy E is policy D. So under public facilities, you have water and sanitary and fire and diking districts. And so I think the reason it's here is because it is following the sections um previously, but I see what you're saying. I think previously we've had us, we've talked about how like the water in our county is both surface and groundwater, so it should just be water resources policies or drinking water resources policies or can't remember what we did before. Um, but this one just has groundwater and so I don't know. I mean, I think it's fine as is, but I could, I could support moving it if people feel strongly.
Well, I'd say either either move it or give rid of the groundwater resources policy heading and put policy A under that in with the others. But to me, it was fine to have groundwater broken out. It's a big uh it's a big issue out there in the Browns made area with their wells and all that. And so um it just seems like it's policy E is about groundwater assessment. You know, determine the extent of the occa for um. That's not really about a particular public facility. That's, that's a resource assessment.
Anyone else feel have opinions on moving that, moving E to groundwater resources? People are feeling a little neutral in the room on that one, Commissioner Farrar.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll just leave that alone then. The the policy itself's fine. It's just uh you have to look in different places to find everything. Uh, just above that, though, there's a scribners. I'd like to see if people will give me a check mark with uh that'd be for policy, uh I guess B. Uh, split by the page here. Um. And it's about uh the last part of that talks about water supply by districts is questionable. Well, systems may be feasible. I was just going to say individual residential, insert those words ahead of well systems so that it's clear that we're talking about the idea of rather than a district wide system, you'd have a self supplied system. It's just a clarification.
So this is under policy D. Third sentence, in areas where the future water supply by districts is questionable. Independent or individual well systems may be feasible.
And I assume that's what's meant rather than drilling more wells for the water districts. I I don't, I don't know. Maybe, maybe uh Ms. Johnson has a recollection on that.
I know, like, so from Arch Cape, we actually have a surface water system and we are considering adding a well too. So it actually could be on the system um basis also for years that we have not a hundred and twenty inches of rain. Um, do you remember? Um, do you have a recollection of that, either Director Henrikson or?
Yeah, just reading it in context with the sentence that follows it. I, to me, I agree with Commissioner Farrar that it should be individual residential wells because then it follows up by talking about the need to have larger lot sizes because you would then have to accommodate the house, the well, and then a separation between the septic system.
Um, do people feel comfortable just adding like individual there as a scribners, just to be clear, clear? Okay. Unless there's any um challenge to that, go ahead and do that. Okay, um, anything else under public facilities and groundwater?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, and again, this may be more clarification and educational for me. Policies J and K. Uh, both of them begin with Clatsop County will work with public and private landowners and they both deal with the either storage of sep uh this waste disposal or temporary. Shouldn't DEQ be involved with that? Or is this process, am I just ahead of wherever the process would be? Shouldn't the county also work with DEQ in these two policies?
DEQ would be the permitting agency at the state level, uh but not necessarily the one to identify or help purchase a site or lease a site.
Then then I have no questions. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Farrar.
Yeah, I I had a question down in the groundwater resources section under policy A. It mentions here in the first sentence that uh the Clatsop County will continue to monitor impacts to groundwater resources caused by climate change. And I wondered whether the county actually is doing monitoring in the, in the sense that that's normally uh meant to mean within hydrologic studies where they're actually collecting data, going out, doing that kind of thing. And I I don't think they are.
Director Henrikson.
We're, we're monitoring the state's monitoring. So if we, if we need to clarify that language, uh, we can do that.
Yeah, I I just think it could be made a little more clear that the county doesn't have a program to do that, but that we do keep we're working with the the existing state agencies and uh tracking what's the current state of knowledge is showing or something like that.
So would you just, yeah, to work with state agencies to monitor impacts? First, okay, yeah, I like that. So um uh staff is putting in there, uh Clatsop County will continue to track state data and analysis regarding impacts to groundwater resources. Thank you, Director Henrikson. Natural hazard policies, energy policies. And then community development. Any comments on pages forty eight and forty nine? And then the last page fifty. No one can argue that we're not thorough. Um, all right, if there's no other comments, we're on page um fifty one where we've added a reference. And I'm going to go back to our cheat sheet here. Um, and I want to thank Ms. Johnson for being with us here today. It is really nice to have somebody besides staff that's that was in the room and um can speak with their considerable wisdom about um about the plan and the process. Um, Ms. Johnson, you want to make one final comment?
Yeah, just a few words again about process. We uh sort of changed horses in midstream. We started out in each of the local citizen advisories dealing with one goal at a time on the county level. And then how that applied to our local area, again, which I found to be a very positive and productive process, but then then we were, our role was diminished and we were not looking at all of the goals, but just at the northeast plan in in our situation. Um, and then the countywide CAC merged with the the planning commission and we had not worked with the planning commission before. But again, that process was very productive and and very positive. And I just want to give a a shout out to um to Andy Davis, who chaired the merging of those two and it and it worked very well. And I would also just like to say that now working with just the planning uh, the planning commission all of whom are volunteers, some of whom won't be back again. I felt that the work that we have done in the last two or three years to create these local plans was respected in this process. And that you all worked very hard to honor the work that was done and to honor the views of each of the the individual areas. And just to clarify or to improve. So and that I think is due to the leadership of Chair Nadia Gardner. So thank you for the, for the work that was done and for this collaboration that brought us to where we are today.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So we're at the point here where um we're going to make a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners. We didn't have a lot of real substantive changes here, but we did make some amendments. So I'm going to suggest that someone make the motion. I recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the Northeast Community Plan Draft Five as a I recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the Northeast Community Plan Draft Five as amended. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll, I'll move to I'll move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of the Northeast Community Plan Draft Five as amended.
And I would second that.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Farrar and a second from Commissioner Powers to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the Northeast Community Plan Draft Five as amended. Any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment. I'm appreciative of this plan. As a person who normally uses Highway thirty to go from Astoria to Longview, I was not aware of everything that was happening in this community. So I'm, I'm very appreciative to be on the planning staff and be able to read this plan and be educated. So thank you for all the hard work.
Any other discussion before we move to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion that we recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the Northeast Community Plan Draft Five as amended? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone, and especially to the Northeast group and staff that worked on this community plan. The hearing is now closed, and so these recommendations will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their approval. So we'll move on to the public hearing. This is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to Clatsup County Comprehensive Plan. Seaside Rural Community Plan Update. That's number two under our public hearings today. And would staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gardner. So the seaside rural community is the community that, that is basically in the southwest portion of the county, accepting the southwest coastal community area. And it stretches all the way from the Pacific Ocean to just east of Highway fifty three and over to the Hamlet area. And it covers approximately one hundred and one thousand acres. This committee was combined with the Elsie Jewel. Planning Area Committee and they were just one committee who handled two community plans. The reason being for that is that it was very hard to recruit seaside rural community members just because the area is so very sparsely populated. It's almost all forest land. And also because many of their issues and concerns were very similar. And so it just made sense to combine those two communities. So over the five month period or six month period from August through December of last year, the committee met monthly, sometimes twice a month and worked on the two community plans with Elsie Jewel having been reviewed on June fourteenth by the Planning Commission. And now bringing to you the Seaside Rural Community Plan. They had a lot of different discussions and our community members varied over time. I think at the height of the committee, just before pandemic, we had probably about seven people who were nominated or appointed by the board to that committee. Once pandemic hit, we dropped down to four and I think at the end we ended up with two who were able to make the meetings at that point. And so they really did just a huge amount of work to accomplish this process. And so really, staff is here today to answer any questions and note any corrections or revisions that you are recommending in the seaside rural plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any initial questions of staff from the Planning Commission on the staff report before we take public testimony? Commissioner Crusher.
I just had a suggestion that it's eleven forty and before we get going into this for the next couple hours. If we're not gonna take a lunch and get in the middle of this, if we could take at least a ten, ten minute break or something like that, I could use a break.
Yes, I definitely appreciate that. And I was looking at the time, I think previously, we, we could take a quick break. I think previously we have lunched at like twelve thirty. But how are people feeling? You want to take a quick break now and, and then also do that? Or do we want to try to? We could take a little longer break and just power through.
I'm all for powering through if we just get a short break. That's what you guys think.
I'm, I'm with that and power through. Yeah, let's do a longer break now.
Okay, and I want to ask staff too, because you know, they, they might be hungry. I'm eating all men, so I could probably make it. But Director Henrickson, what would be your preference and other stuff?
Yeah. Well, Julia and Ian don't really need to be here at this point. So if they ever need to leave, same with Jason and David, they could leave if they needed to. They can also sit there behind with their cameras off and eat their lunches. I personally have no preference. So whatever is most convenient for the planning commission.
Okay, well, since we had a request to take a break now, we can go ahead and just take, so is, is ten minutes sufficient for other people?
Yes.
All right, so I'm seeing not a head. So I don't think we need to make a motion to do that. Do we? Okay, so let's just go ahead and take a ten minute break now. So and then come back to the hearing. At, at, so come back at the hearing. Let's, let's make it eleven fifty five. So if everyone could come back on time by that, by then and we'll get started right away and we'll get through this in an hour. That's my goal. All right, thanks. Welcome back, everyone, to the hearing regarding the Clatsup County Comprehensive Plan Update. Focusing on the Seaside Rural Community Plan. And we've done our initial staff report and I believe questions and we're moving on to public testimony. Do we have any other comments or questions to staff before we open up for public testimony? All right. This hearing is open for public testimony. All speakers for the floor are to state their names and address before speaking. If you're representing anyone, please let us know who you're representing and limit your remarks to two minutes. Do we have anyone who's interested in speaking today on the Seaside Rural Community Plan? Hearing none. Public testimony is now closed and discussion is open for Planning Commission members. I'll call to your attention page two of the staff report on page sixty two of our packet today. Our goal is to review the Seaside Rural Community Plan Draft Five, identify any questions and provide recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. We have two suggested motions. One is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they adopt the plan as submitted by staff or as amended in this meeting, depending on what we do today. So we'll go ahead and get started. And get my document here. On page sixty eight of our packet, we'll just walk through the narrative, starting with the introduction and the landscape units. I'll just go ahead and maybe say what Chris Farrar will say, which is that it would be great to have in the introduction some basic information about the seaside rural planning area and a map of that planning area. If staff would be willing to add that information. Am I missing anything, Commissioner Farrar? Okay.
Nope.
And then in landscape units, I understand staff will as possible update these beautiful nineteen seventies sketches using modern technology as is possible with staff. Any comments, Commissioner Farrar, or others on the landscape units sections of this plan?
I, I kind of like that figure that's up there right now. It's it's a nice mix of kind of artistic license and showing the salient points, the importance, so.
Maybe more relevant to the last plan also, right?
Yes.
The Columbia River lowlands. So we, if we walk through, so I'm noting here that the estuary and coastal shoreline, so this area includes Tillamook Head, which is the most significant rocky outcropping in the county on the coastal side. And the Ecola Creek Estuary. And then, you know, there's the city of Cannon Beach, but the county wraps around the city of Cannon Beach in the drinking watershed of the city of Cannon Beach is in county lands too. Yes, Commissioner Farrar.
I had two quick things on page six. Where under Ecola Creek Estuary, in the third paragraph that talks about Ecola Creek and what the streambeds made of, and then it goes on the next sentence. And it switches over to Elk Creek and I've noticed this in a few places in the narrative part and possibly in the policies. I can't remember, but I, I think Elk Creek was a name that was applied, the Ecola Creek, but now it's Ecola Creek. Can somebody correct me on that or explain that difference?
That's my understanding too, is that some of the locals still call it Elk Creek, but it's, it's current name is Ecola.
Okay, we can update those then.
It's confusing too, because our low income housing development in Cannon Beach is called Elk Creek.
Yeah, I saw that on the map too. On that same page under Tillamook Head, second paragraph toward the end of the first sentence there, it has pod life. I think that's just a typo. It should be pod like. Referring to the buzz sold out crops.
Oh, yeah, first paragraph, second, second paragraph, first sentence, end of it. Yeah, there we go. That's why it's nice to have a geologist on the commission. Natural hazards. Stream flooding. Erosion, mass movement. Groundwater. Fire and tsunami. Yes, Commissioner Farrar.
Under the tsunami section, I, I wonder if in all these community plans where tsunami is addressed, if it wouldn't be worth including the reference to the I never can get the acronym right, but the recent tsunami evacuation facilities plan. Does, did that extend down to this area, Director Henrickson? Is there something pertinent in that plan that maybe a reference could just be made under that paragraph of this document?
Yeah, it covered along the whole coast. I'd have to go back. I don't think there was very much, if anything, for the seaside rural area. I know there was a lot in Arch Cape and Clatsup Plains primarily, but I can double check that.
Okay, if it, if it looks like it has something worth adding, because I think there's a policy in there that they should be looking at evacuation route or something. But we can wait until we get to the policies to, to look at that, I guess.
I think because it's such a large area, large area, definitely it's gonna be routes. And I think most of those, like really high impact tsunami areas are in the cities. But there's certainly like that flooding area between Highway twenty six one oh one junction and seaside will be completely underwater because of the rivers there. So, yeah. Earthquake, Cascadia, subduction zone. And then natural resources. This is an area that has some, you know, big quarries, as we've seen in front of the commission before. Water resources, forestry and agriculture.
Underwater resources, I was gonna suggest just I think it's fine to show the North Coast Basin map if that's desired, but rather than show all the different watersheds that don't have anything to do with our county. I was, I was gonna suggest just toward the end of that first paragraph underwater resources, just maybe rewrite it. It says the basin consists of eight watersheds. I was gonna suggest an accent might be the planning area includes parts of the Mechanicum and the Halum Watersheds. And then just scratch that bullet list. And especially the two that bring to the Columbia really have very little to do with this planning. That, that's just a suggested revision that tailors it more to the, the seaside rural area. And then at the top of the next page is another reference to Elk Creek that you might want to flip over to Ecola.
Okay, and which were the two watersheds that drain that you decided?
The Mechanicum and then the Halum.
Which is talked about that last paragraph there on page thirteen focuses on the seaside rural versus those other ones.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna suggest though that the the two watersheds that dream to the Columbia River, I mean, that's not really relevant to this area either. So so that yeah, that part could be left out without. And I guess with respect to the use of the term Elk Creek, you could just do a search on Elk Creek throughout the document, because there's actually at least two sentences here where it's used on the next page.
Yeah, the third paragraph talking about Cannon Beach watershed. Yeah, I just had a, yeah, quick typo in that one. The second paragraph, you know, so the, the city has bought more than a thousand acres and you in fact say that the next sentence. So the Ecola Creek Forest Reserve is one thousand forty acres currently, so. You could just say purchasing the Ecola Creek Forest Reserve and take out the nearly a thousand and developing. And it, I wouldn't call it developing anyway. It's just, they bought it and kept it. Haven't really done that much with it. They just were protecting it. We planted.
Yeah, it, it's a minor point maybe, but I, I kind of question the name Cannon Beach watershed. I'm, I'm not sure that's really a recognized watershed. What might be better just to say Cannon Beach obtains its water from part of the Ecola Creek watershed. Or, or something to that effect.
Cannon Beach. Cannon Beach's drinking water springs are in the Ecola Creek Forest Reserve, right? So.
Okay, at this point I need some specific language because I'm not following exactly what you want me to put in here.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I, I would just say, say the city of Cannon Beach. I I would just say say the city of Cannon Beach obtains. Water from part of the Ecola Creek watershed. And scratch the word is and just have located along the west fork of. Along their west fork about three quarters of a mile upstream, so. You'd be removing the word is that in that sentence and also Elk Creek and. Just saying that the city of Cannon Beach obtains water from part of the Ecola Creek. Watershed located along the west fork. About three quarters of a mile upstream from the confluence of the forks. It's not a great sentence, but yes, roughly. Trying to get the geographical names to to line up with general usage, that's all.
Good enough.
You gotta fix the beginning where it just says the Cannon Beach.
Cannon Beach, take out the, yeah. All right, um forestry and agriculture.
I I had a question on the going back to the mineral resources.
Yeah.
That table where Volmer Creek and Square Creek Pit are on page twelve. What about the Knife River Pit that is? Is a rock pit as well, is that not? To be included in that, sorry, on page twelve. Right there, the Volmer Creek, Big River, and then you got Bayview, what about the Knife River? Rock pit right outside of seaside.
I think that's actually in the Clutz Plains Planning Area.
Okay.
It is south of seaside.
That's that's south of seaside, just before the junk right at Peterson.
I I, yeah, I think it is, hold on, let me double check.
You're right, Gail, I've got it, I've got the planning area map on my screen. It's uh just at the southern end of the seaside, or sorry, of Clutz Plains Planning Area.
Yeah, that's one of the wonky things about this planning area, I think.
Thanks, Ian.
That's why that map at the beginning, because it's helpful. And and there's also like little ones too in the forest land, of course, like lots of gravel pits. Does that, that answer your question though, Commissioner Crusher?
Yeah, it did, I I didn't have the map right in front of me exactly where that boundary was.
Um okay, let's move on to cultural. So under housing. The shortest one, I think, of any of the plans, um but you can see how low demand has been in the past. Where you had just over fifteen years, forty permits, which is significantly less than I think a lot of the other areas. But that doesn't mean that the housing plan doesn't apply for sure. Uh recreational facilities. State park. State parks. Um I think Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, uh again, page sixteen, I don't have the new packet, I have the old packet. Uh one, two, three, fourth paragraph down. Where it begins with when the original planning process. You go down that last sentence that starts with however recreational facilities which cater to. If you continue down to the next line that goes and major highway improvements caused by increased use. And promotion. Are prevented. I was, I think the paragraph is referring to highway improvements in that area. And I would suggest you delete that and major highway improvements, blah, 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 are prevented. Because that's going to be a transportation safety issue if they have to cause improvements to major highways. Unless I'm misinterpreting this sentence. Because I would read it as highway, however recreational facilities which cater to the tourist industry. Should be closely monitored and major highway improvements by increased use. And promotion of recreational resources in the area are prevented. Uh anyway, so that's just a thought. I don't think you can prevent any major highway improvements, especially if it involves traffic safety.
I'm having trouble just understanding that sentence.
Yeah, it's a very long, well, I was trying to get the subject, the verb and the object, excuse my English. So the subject is recreational vehicles.
Facilities.
Or excuse me, facilities, thank you. And the verb is shall be closely monitored, I got that, but then it kinda weaves around, I can appreciate. Ensuring the noise, but not for major highway improvements. That's why I suggested just deleting it. Because ODOT whoever on the are going to modify if they need to for traffic safety, like you can't prevent that.
Is everyone okay with taking, so uh if we take out the however, and just say recreational facilities. And then put a period after the end of traffic congestion is prevented. Uh I think we could just then delete the rest of that that came after.
Right, yeah, just delete it, I I that's my suggestion.
Sounds good to me.
I think, well, it's it's sort of a policy, right? More than a, it's more, it's an opinion, I feel like I'm hearing from whoever put it, whoever wrote it. Whether it was from nineteen seventy nine or if it was from today, is that people in those areas don't want to see their highways expanded. Um so I just wanna respect that whoever. Um, you know, made that note, it is. Um, I like that first one for sure, the first sentence and the second sentence. Um. I think what you hear in these areas are that people. Want to maintain the rural quality of life and part of it is not living on a major like four lane highway. Um, and so, yeah, so I don't know, like I. I don't know if if they wanted that sentence in, I have a hard time at least. Acknowledging that 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 is something that we need to balance. And I wouldn't say, I mean, I think community members certainly have a voice in what happens in our highways, whether it be the speed limit or an expansion. I mean, gosh, look at Portland, they're fighting over those major federal highways and bridges. Um, so. Is there a way that we could keep that second sentence that?
Well, if you want to leave it as a narrative, then I would suggest for consideration, Nadia, and major highway improvements. Caused by increased use and promotion of recreational resources in the area are a concern.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, and so then that it just acknowledges that.
You just can't prevent it, but you've been to be concerned about it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I had the idea of uh that they be of concern also. But I was gonna suggest making that just another sentence. Take out the word and.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Yeah.
Well, I think so, I think staff has already done that, so they split those about one sentence into two, and so now the second sentence is. New major highway improvements driven by increased use and promotion of recreational resources in the area are a concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Crusher, is that?
I I think it's inevitable, it's kinda contradicts itself, you want growth, but you don't want traffic, it's gonna happen, we're already having traffic, whether there's. More, you know, campgrounds or whatever it heads up being, I mean, anybody who tries to travel from north to south or south to north. On the highway here knows that there's a great deal of traffic and it's, it's a, I don't think it's. It it's contradicting itself to me, it's, they they wanna have the the growth, but they don't want to have traffic, so I I I like the. It's a concern, a concern rather than prevented.
Sure, yep. Um, okay, so we kinda skipped over. Uh housing, recreation, state parks, scenic waterways, county parks. Um. We have North Fork, Nookini Halum and Clucci Creek here. And then trails.
You know, I'll just interject here that. May- maybe I'm just becoming more forgiving or whatever, but, which I doubt. But uh this plan seemed to read quite well, I I I like this plan a lot, it was, it's. Fairly concise and most of it, you know, really uh was was well written. I I appreciated the job done here.
Okay, open spaces next. I like how it's been updated with the Boneyard Ridge acquisition. I don't know, so is the rainforest reserve and the Arch Cape forest behind Arch Cape in this area? Or in the southwest area? Because I'm looking at this open space. Map, then the next page on map four. And it looks like behind Arch Cape is actually seaside rural.
So without knowing exactly where the boundaries of the reserve is or are. I would say part of it's in southwest, part of it may be in seaside rural.
I think it is, yeah, so I think it's in both. Uh but I think most of it is actually in the. You can click on those if they say the Eco Trust Forest Management, that's, that was the, that's not the. Oh, well, that's old data because it says Lewis and Clark, okay, wait. Now due to the right, um that big block behind that one, yeah. That's us, oh look, it's updated, so that's our, that's our water district purchase that we just did last two weeks ago. So that is actually in this. Um but we we do, I think, have a few blocks um west of that line. Um, but I think, yeah, there's North Coast Land Conservancy, so um so, yeah. I I would suggest that if staff could, please and thank you, add um under open space. Add the Ri- North Coast Land Conservancy's thirty five hundred acre rainforest reserve and. Um Arch Cape Domestic Water Supply Districts, it's actually fourteen forty one acre. Um drinking watershed property called the Arch Cape Forest. Okay, anything else in those sections, then we go on to historic and scenic areas. And natural areas. Fish and wildlife. There's a nice list there of wildlife, but what it doesn't note is the listed species, so you could just put. ESA listed in parentheses or something, um coastal Coho. Which isn't even on the list, actually. So the coastal Coho is a listed specish fish under game game fish and then marble murelet. Is it, is ESA listed? And I think that's it.
The um. Under the the fish column there is silver salmon, is that the other name for Coho?
Oh yeah, so yeah, I would, I would remove.
So I was gonna suggest putting Coho there because that's typically what people are using as the name now, it's. More identifiable.
Yeah, I mean, technically, we also have, you know, orca and sturgeon and stuff, but we we won't get into the the ocean, I think that opens a big, a big door. So we can leave the ocean out for now and just focus on the river.
I think under mammals, I'd like to see wildcat removed and replaced with. Bobcat, cougar, specific animals, wildcat is kind of.
Weird.
One is a big game animal and one's a fur bearing animal, I mean, it it's, they're two completely separate things, just same s- subspecies.
Yeah, cougar and bobcat. Where does this list come from? It's kinda funny, Meadow Mouse?
Nineteen seventy nine.
Oh, this is like the, okay, well, we won't get into this because I'm sure we can make a lot of changes, but at least, yeah, those make those little. Those little changes that begin. You could, okay. Um, okay, so then in the, in the, so I like that table though, at least we have something, but uh. Under the narrative, um maybe also just note, um it looks like um. Coastal Coho, I think, so on page twenty two, third paragraph, I'm. Oh, there's Elk Creek again, but um. They talk about streams. So somewhere in there, I'd like to see is just sentence that says um coastal Coho. Is the only listed run in this area or something like that, and then marble murelet. Are also a listed sea bird that nests in this area. They nest in Oswald West, Ecola and well, in Saddle Mountain and in um ODF lands uh east of Arcadia. Okay, anything else on that, um commissioners uh of fish and wildlife before we move on to transportation and public facilities? Transportation. I don't love that second to last sentence that says because the seaside rural area is expected to be developed at very low densities, it's not needed. Um, just noting, I just participated in this work group with a blind person and a person in a wheelchair. And it really opened my eyes to the challenges that they have just getting around, I think everywhere. We need some public transportation to help serve people, um and so, and. Some of these areas like around Cannon Beach. Um. You know, there's significant numbers of people and around seaside, so I just, I don't love that. I don't love that, but is that, is that something that you heard people felt strongly about? That we shouldn't have bus service? Um and then also, I I mean, you know, we have our local bus service and then we have bus service to Portland and to the airport. And I think that's very valued in in South County, like we have a direct seaside Cannon Beach to Portland route. That's full most of the time. Um. I don't know.
Oh, I don't like the sentence either, honestly, I'd like to see it just taken out. There's, there's lots of, I mean, I have employees that live out there. There's, there's lots of, I mean, I have employees that live out there that would actually use public transportation. I mean, it's, it's needed everywhere.
Yeah, I I agree with the deletion. I sit on the uh the budget board for Sons of Empire. Let them make that decision. They'll do it through surveys and so on and so forth. So I agree with deleting it.
Commissioner Farrar, do you have an opinion on that?
Uh, I I agree that bus service is probably very important. In fact, it was brought up at the Elsie Jewel uh face-to-face meeting. And that group you know, kind of mirrors this same area largely. They they wanted a little more public transit available.
Okay. All right, sounds like we're unanimous on that. Thank you. Um, okay, public facilities and services, water districts.
So I may be in the wrong district now, I think.
Just a uh one word change there on uh page twenty-four of the document under water districts. Uh, it's second paragraph, um, there's on a by peak summer weekend, it should be big. Just wanted to note that.
So they talk about, there's no water districts that serve the seaside rural planning district, of course, as I noted, Cannon Beach gets their water, but then it's for the city. Um, and then seaside provides water to some limited areas around seaside. Um and then it jumps to groundwater wells, but I know a lot of the people in this area actually get their water from surface water. So some get them from wells. Um, but some get them from streams. So I'd like to see just some note of people in this area. You know, it's it's individual systems almost exclusively in there. It's a variety of and that's why you end up, so you have hard water challenges. That's why, and then you also have water in those little streams drying up in the summer. Both of them actually dry up in the summer for all of these communities, but. Thank you. Um, schools. Free school districts. And they sold the seaside schools. So all of those you can say have have sold. And then fire protection. Nice section on the the different protection districts. Septic systems. So there's no sanitary systems in this area. Is that right? Power generation. And then community development. Am I missing anybody's hands? Setting assumptions, page twenty-nine thirty. Development. Rural lands. Rural ag. Where is Black Bridge?
Mile marker four on Highway twenty-six.
Oh, okay. Leave it to the
That's the cutoff line between seaside fire district and Hamlet Fire District.
Aha. Okay, forest lands, page thirty-two and thirty-three, conservation, natural. And then we get to goals, objectives and policies. Commissioner Farrar, I'm gonna ask you if you have any other comments on the narrative before we move on.
No, I, I'm done with them.
Okay, all right, let's do this now. Um, so we've got who significant number of pages here of this guy. Um, so we have our overall goal. And then our landscape unit goals. And then nat- natural hazards. Commissioner Powers.
Well, yeah, Christian Farrar is probably gonna say, say the same thing. Natural hazard policies, steam bank, stream banks, sorry, erosion. And the one under wildfire, the policies one and they should be reversed.
Yeah.
Streambank erosion.
Their streambank is dealing with wildfires and the one under wildfires dealing with riverbanks. So they should be reversed. So I would motion to reverse those two policies between the streambank and the erosion.
I think we, yeah, I think we could consider that Scribner's because that was just a
Okay, fine.
Yeah. So staff will swap those the way they're supposed to be. Thank you for catching that. All all three of us, I think, or maybe four of us even got that. Wait a second. All right, water and tsunami.
Under tsunami, there's one policy there. And uh I guess my question is from where? An evacuation route should be located within the seaside rural planning area. It it's just so non-specific. Maybe it could be just qualified to study possible evacuation routes for the area or something like that.
A simple solution might be just that evacuation routes should be located in the seaside. Or we could refer to the plan if we knew this area was in the plan. Um, so, okay, somebody wants to propose some language? Make a motion, maybe?
I'll try. Uh, an evacuation route should be located in the course with the tsunami evacuation plan, whenever that version, proper title is should be considered, yeah. Or should be located according to.
Okay, evacuation routes should be located within.
Yeah, yeah, as a done, yeah, yeah, thank you, Gail.
As should be, okay, wait, is she writing it too? You're right. There we go. Um, I'd like to make that plural. Yeah, there you go. There we go. So um, does that look like your motion there? Evacuation routes?
Yeah, that's how, that looks like my motion, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Powers is moving that um, the natural resources policies tsunami policy one reads. Evacuation routes should be located within the seaside rural planning area as identified in the TFP. Um, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Farrar has seconded any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um earthquakes. And then we move on to housing and recreation. And then cultural areas. Page thirty-eight. Historic and scenic areas. Tillamook Lighthouses for sale for many millions. Natural area policies. Fish and wildlife. Transportation. Power generation and then community development policies. Um, under page forty, objective one, policy one. Um, be western, just at the end. Commissioner Farrar, do you have any in this last couple pages?
No, I'm, I'm good. I I again, I'll say I found the plan pretty well put together, so I didn't have a lot of problems.
Any other final questions, comments, amendments from the commission? All right, that brings us back to our original motion. So I'm looking for a motion today. I recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the seaside rural community plan draft five as amended.
Okay, I was waiting for Commissioner Farrar to do this. But okay, I'll make the motion. I recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the seaside rural community plan draft five as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Powers and a or sorry, a motion from Commissioner Powers and a second from Commissioner Farrar that we recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the seaside rural community plan draft five as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes unanimously. These recommendations will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their approval. Um, the hearing is now closed. Um, all right, so we uh at the beginning of meeting amended the agenda to um not address the final community plan during this meeting. So we just have one final adjourn- uh agenda item today, the good of the order. Did the, any of the planning commissioners have anything relevant to Clatzen County or the Planning Commission to report? Commissioner Farrar?
This is your last couple minutes, I guess. Attending Clatzen Planning Commission meetings, Chair Gardner, or Nadia, as I like to call you. I certainly appreciate your work on this commission and will miss your presence.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. I miss y'all too. Um, it's been a pleasure, as I mentioned at our last meeting. Um, and I also again want to thank Commissioner Orrin Quong. I I did finally hear back from Krishna, or he didn't understand. I think that he was still on the commission until the end of the month. So that's why he's not at the meeting today. Um, but uh, yeah, no, I really appreciate all y'all and um staff also and um, you know, keep up the good work and um, hopefully the relationship between the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners um is positive moving forward and that um, a diversity of voices continues to be um, heard on every level. Um, and I hope that um, communication will be um ongoing and often and respectful um throughout uh the work. So anything else? All right, hearing none. Um, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, and have a great um, summer.